... your attention, and we would like to resume the meeting, and we will begin with those who would like to join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's main agenda.
Certainly.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you. We'll move next to the much anticipated public participation. We are going to begin with a presentation by Amy Masechko and Tyler Walsh on the Mental and Behavioral Health Grant. Hi Tyler, hi Amy, welcome.
Hey, well, thank you so much for having Amy and I tonight. My name is Tyler Walsh, I'm the Executive Director of the McCullough Hyde Memorial Hospital Foundation. Thanks again for having me back. I know Mike Everett and I were here last month, so I appreciate you not locking the doors when you saw my name again. But tonight we're hearing a much different topic than the hospital's annual report. So, just as a reminder, I've been with the hospital now for about two years, and lived here in Oxford for about 15, so... But tonight we're going to talk about a $2 million grant that's been awarded to this community for behavioral health and mental health. And how it's going to work is I'm going to spend two or three minutes kind of giving some background and context, then I'm going to turn it over to Amy, the expert here, to kind of go through the goals and the aspirations for the next four years of this project, and how all the teams are coming together to work to a common goal. So Amy will introduce herself here in a minute, but I do want to take a second to introduce Amanda Rybault, who's back here tonight, Amanda. Amanda has been recently named the Manager of Community and Physician Relations at McCullough Hyde. And that role is the successor role of the position held by Sharon Klein, who most of you all know recently, and well-deservingly retired recently. Amanda's been at McCullough Hyde for 14 months, this is her second stint with us. She's been, she's had 18 years of healthcare leadership experience, and 27 years of nursing experience. So in her new role, Amanda will have an impactful part of implementing this grant on behalf of the hospital, and then also, in addition to all the wonderful interactions that she'll have, that comes with the community relations part of that job at the hospital. So Amanda, we're happy you're here. I think this is your second or third week on the job, so we're excited that you came. We didn't ask her to speak, though. She was like, please, she said I can do it, but we thought we'd just let her sit back there. So we're excited to have her as part of the team. All right, on to the grant. So in September of last year, a $2 million federal grant was secured to support mental and behavioral health. The four-year grant was awarded by HERSA, which is the Health Resource and Services Administration, as part of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. The Coalition for a Healthy Community, McCullough Hyde Memorial Hospital, and TriHealth, Miami University, Talawanda School District, the Butler County Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Services Board, Epiphany Community Services, and the McCullough Hyde Foundation formed a consortium which applied for the grant and will now lead it together, the implementation plans and the management plans. Just a little bit about the foundation's role, is we're acting as the physical and administrative agent for this grant. You know, this is, and I mentioned this last month, this is the first time the foundation has been able to provide this type of service to the community and to our outside partners. This is outside of our ongoing and historic support of the hospital. And this was all because the Board of Trustees of the foundation made a strategic decision to embrace these unique and meaningful opportunities that allow us to engage with the community, again, outside of the four walls of the hospital, and to work alongside our strong community partners. So the service area of this grant, this grant will impact communities throughout the city of Oxford, Hanover Township, Milford Township, Oxford Township, Raleigh Township, including Miami University and its student population. And you know, the consortium, when we all started to meet several months ago, one thing kept ringing clear through our conversations, that local voices and local solutions matter. And to see this consortium come together with these pillars of our community and our greater Oxford community to say, it's time to tackle and to continue to tackle issues that are affecting our neighbors and friends, is really important. This funding furthers our collective commitment to provide those local solutions to our community's issues. So we're really excited about the work that's coming forth in the next four years. With that, Amy, I'll let you get into the details.
All right, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I'm Amy Masechko, Health and Wellness Coordinator for Talawanda School District and Director of the Coalition for a Healthy Community here in the Oxford area. This exciting opportunity for our community is, is coming on the heels of our first million-dollar grant that we received in 2019, to really look at prevention, treatment, and recovery activities and services specific to the city of Oxford and Oxford Township. As Tyler alluded to, this next grant allowed us to expand to service the entire Talawanda School District, but this first grant is the city of Oxford and Oxford Township. This grant was a $1 million gift over three years. We are in our third year, that third year started on September 1, and really the efforts were around three pillars: building connections, building capacity, and care delivery within our, our community. Several great things have taken place, and the impact has, I believe, been noticed, and our funders have been very impressed, I think, by the work that has happened thus far. We have helped support the implementation of social-emotional learning supports within the Talawanda School District. Panorama is a tool to assess the social-emotional learning needs of our students, knowing that those serve as protective factors when it comes to substance use prevention. We have also collaborated with the Regional Harm Reduction Collaborative to offer weekly community-based harm reduction services. Council was so gracious in to support the syringe services program that is now up and running, and I have to tell you, we have a beautiful example of how this is making a difference, where we have an individual who was visiting the site, using the services on a regular basis, and then the workers noticed they weren't coming. And there was a little fear in what, what was going on, a couple weeks of no, the individual not showing up, but just last week, the individual came back and said, I haven't been here because I'm in treatment. It's working, thank you. I get emotional talking about it, because it's making a difference. Medication Takeback Days, Oxford Police Department, Miami University Police Department, Oxford Township Police Department, our small little community has collected over 3,000 pounds of medicine recently, over the years, because people are getting it out of their homes, environmentally disposing of it in a, in a friendly way, and so this grant is supporting that initiative as well. Also, we are so grateful for the ability to engage a peer support specialist. This is an individual with lived experience in recovery from Dakota Rehabilitation Center. This individual is working in the emergency department in the OB floor at McCullough Hyde, but also is working now out in the community, working with Ashley, our social service liaison with, with Oxford Police, and really, we're seeing great success across multiple generations who are benefiting from this peer support coach, helping people in their recovery, continuing in their recovery. It's just, these are just a sampling of the wonderful things that are happening as a result of this grant. What are our goals moving forward in these next years? So excited to address the structural and system-level barriers that exist to improve rural residents' access to quality, evidence-based, you know, programming and, and services. Improve the quality and sustainability of rural behavioral healthcare services, again, making sure they're coordinated, making sure they're evidence-based, trauma-informed. And finally, improving the capacity of the behavioral healthcare system to address rural community risk factors, which are very different than urban or suburban risk factors, and the social determinants of health to affect the behavioral health overall of rural residents. So we're working to work with the university to create kind of a workforce pipeline to increase the, the labor field in, in behavioral health. We're working to ensure that telehealth, which people have come to depend on, everyone has access to connectivity and privacy when engaging in telehealth services. Working to provide access to specialized treatments and psychiatry to our community, and expanding peer support, we're making great connections, as I said, and we want it to just be something that is throughout the community, and not just in particular buildings where people can access that. So, we've got our work cut out for us, but we have the right people, we are the right community, this is the right time to make this work happen. And we're grateful for all of your support, and thank you for letting us share what's ahead for our community. Any questions?
Amy, first, thank you very much. Great, great presentation, same to you Tyler. Big shoes to fill, welcome. Any questions for Amy?
Not, if we think of any, we'll forward them to you.
Please do, you know where to find me.
Glenn has a question.
Is there anything on the city side that we can help achieve your goals?
I think so. Yes, and we are, oh, we are, we're, we're getting into our action plan now that we're wrapping up that other, the first grant and starting the second, and so we, if that's an invitation, we would welcome the opportunity to partner, because I think it's, it's going to take all of us to, to make this, this action plan come to life.
When you get to that point, I would happily attend a work session so we can sit down and go over those steps.
Thank you, thank you, that means a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy.
Awesome, thank you everybody.
Now we will entertain public comments. Anyone wishing to address counsel on items that are not on the agenda, or that are on the consent agenda, can come forward and give us your name and address. Unlike the school board and some other boards that only give you three minutes, we give you five. But believe it, we will close you down at five minutes. There are little handy lights which Heather is going to operate, and they'll give you a yellow when you're getting about to the end, but if you ignore the red, I will remind you, as pleasantly as possible, that your time is up. So, welcome, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you, I just thought this was such a perfect segue, because, you know, hearing about all of the stuff they're doing with addiction and, and mental health, because one of the things that we included in our...
You are.
I'm Laura Osborne, so I was the President of the Board of TOPS at the time that we raised $90,000 to create our floor plan, our architectural plans, and our engineering plans, which were completed by February of 2019, I believe, and fully approved by the city. We had public hearings in these chambers in which we talked to the neighbors. So that project was, part of the reason that the project went forward when the ARPA money came out, was because it was shovel-ready. We were ready to start shopping it around, and we even had a list of people who could build the building. But one of the things that we had in our floor plan is a whole set of office space with the intention of partnering with local agencies in order to work on mental health and addiction issues. I mean, probably some of you remember the weekend that two people died in one weekend over in Parkview Arms. And so, social services are really where public health meets public safety. I mean, so traditionally, Oxford has invested pretty heavily in, in recreation, which is great, but if anybody really wants to understand what social services in Oxford have been like, you just have to visit these three buildings, or I'm going to add the fourth, because our building was condemned, literally. Father Silver used to talk about daydreaming, about bulldozing, and he did finally get his dream, we, we had to move, but those three buildings are a perfect metaphor for what we have now. They are inadequate, they are fragmented, and they are unusable, and have been for almost the entire history of social services. So as a mental health and addictions professional myself, I know what we can do, and what we need is a great space to do it in. So we were pretty grateful when the county, understanding that the Talawanda School District is a third of Butler County, really said, we serve the, the most, people in the most desperate need. I mean, that's sort of our target, although our mission is to serve everybody across the lifespan. I wouldn't say we're multi-generational, I would say we're across the lifespan, so we perform many of the same functions as senior centers for everybody else, in terms of food programs. But I heard a lot of debate and discussion, and I just wanted to offer myself as a resource for information, because as I was sitting here, listening, I, so many times I was like, I could answer that question, or I have a document that speaks to that, or that's not quite true, or that's not what, sort of the, what was happening. And so I'm excited about having public input, so we can really start to get, to really understand the, the timeline here. I also wanted to speak to questions of fairness. You know, social services in Oxford have been almost starved to death. You know, we get really very little money in everything that we have. Anybody who's been around long enough remembers Sharefest. I mean, we, we literally, in order to fund ourselves, we literally fight for scraps. Like, other people's garbage funds significant portions of what we do, and I just think, considering the desperation that's out there with the opioid epidemic, I just feel like we really can do better than that, make a deeper commitment. So I think that's, the, the most important point that I want to make is just the amount of preparation and information that we have available on the project, which is much broader and deeper than I think, than, than the work sessions sort of reflected, the amount of thinking that went behind it. We did approach all the other players in the community at various points, including the Senior Center, to talk about how we could all come together and coordinate ourselves. One of the things TOPS worked really hard on is avoiding this pitting, almost this competition for scarce resources pitting against each other. At that point, we weren't able to, actually, we did approach the city and city officials and said, is there a way we can all come together and develop a long-range plan? And that just didn't turn out to be a workable plan, and now we find ourselves in the situation where now we're having to pit people against each other. I don't think that it's a great place to be, but I think that there are solutions to, for us working together.
Thank you Laura, very much appreciated.
Hi, I'm Steve Schnabel, I live at 44 Autumn Drive. Been a resident for 38 years now, and for the past five years, I've been the Director at Oxford Seniors. I also have the pleasure of chairing City Council's Housing Advisory Commission, and I, I believe that those of us on that commission are very committed to seeing that those who are homeless, those who have housing needs, are addressed in a way that makes their lives much better. I also wanted to alert you all that the Senior Center building experienced a flood on Christmas Eve. The first respondents were our fire department, who were able to cut off the, the water. I just happened to go in to get Scotch tape to do my Christmas presents, and found it. I had no idea how long it was going on. Today, with Casey's help, and strong support, we've had demolition beginning, including removal of floor that was put down last year with CARES Act money, and carpeting. I don't know how far it's going to go, but we will get it back into shape. That's intruded on our operations, so we are closed to the public for right now, affecting our adult day service program, and, but not our transportation and meals-on-wheels services. In reference to the new location, I too am very concerned that there has been a situation where there has to be a Solomon's Choice. I wouldn't want to be any of you, but I have to offer some additional facts, because I still think we're, we're talking about a dream. Of course, I have a dream as well, and that would be to have a new building. I'm not sure that having it on the tri-property is the right place, that has, has yet to be decided. But what I do know is that we need at least 8,500 square feet, which includes the space of walls that is often not considered when you're doing a floor plan, and that the build cost is about $450 per square foot. So we're looking at, for our need alone, somewhere in the $5 million range. I understand that a gym, the three gymnasiums and the remodeling of the tri-building might cost something a little less than that. I also just calculated, based on the 6,000 square feet that was shown in the picture for TOPS, I can't tell whether that includes the square footage for the basement, or if the basement means an additional 6,000 square feet, but that runs, if it's the, and then that's, if it's only the interior space, that comes out to 7,200 square feet for one floor, and at $450 per, for building, that would cost somewhere a little under $4 million. Those projects all are worthy. Right now Miami University is running a $1 billion fundraising campaign, and there are many people in this community who feel obliged to make a big gift to that. Where is all of this money coming from beyond $1.5 million of federal dollars that are being dangled in front of all of us? We really need to be sitting down and talking about this in a much deeper and much more informed way than we are. Yes, we had conversation with TOPS several years ago about their project. There was not room to operate our programs during the day hours, which is a primary time for us. We stepped away, and, and explained that, but I think that the message came across that we didn't want to be on that part of town. Don't like that message at all. I've been in this business a long time. I've, in my 40-year career, the biggest gift I've been able to get is $200,000. Fundraisers know that in a capital fundraising campaign, 80% of the gifts come from individuals, not from corporations, we have none in town, you just made that point a little bit ago, and not from big outside foundations. We have a big problem.
Thank you Steve, we appreciate you coming. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Brinkman, I live at 44 Emerald Woods Drive. Some of this material that I'm going to share with you now was covered in the work session, but that's not part of the public record, so I'm going to make my statement as written, knowing that some of it was already covered, because I would like it to be in the public record. So I'm here tonight to state my concern about a grant request of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA that was made to Butler County Commissioners and subsequently changed. The change in the request is very concerning, and requires some history of what happened to understand how detrimental an impact this will have on our community if not reversed. In August 2021, the city of Oxford and TOPS NFRC made a presentation to Butler County Commissioners requesting 1.5 million in ARPA funds to build a one-stop facility that would house TOPS and provide space for other social services needed by residents experiencing food insecurity. The building would also have the ability to provide limited overnight cold shelter housing. The presentation to the county commissioners was organized by city staff, and was a wonderful collaboration that would have funded result in improved services to residents in our community. The construction of this building would also be the fulfillment of careful planning over a number of years by TOPS NFRC boards. The careful planning included architectural plans and renderings, a project development, design checklist, and agreements with the city of Oxford for the lease of designated property for $1 a year for 25 years. The plan was very close to complete, not quite complete, but very close, awaiting funds to fulfill. Fast forward 14 months, the county has awarded money to many projects, but has not yet awarded these requested funds. The county is about to consider that request, and here's where the problem comes in. The original grant request was discarded by city staff and replaced with a request for $3 million to renovate the tri-building. The renovation would accommodate both the tri and senior center, thereby freeing up the Morrow Building site for the Amtrak station or platform. The changes made without the knowledge or consent of TOPS, FRC, City Council, or the community. Instead, City Council is asked to approve the change after the fact, and does so. Unfortunately, the rationale given that FRC and TOPS weren't ready to move forward was not accurate. So what went wrong? Why weren't groups who were instrumental to this project consulted, and why wasn't City Council more fully informed? And why wasn't the community included and consulted? So I looked at the agenda for the November 1st, 2022 meeting, where this change was briefly discussed, and it notes the resolution for the $3 million request for the tri-renovation funding, but the resolution doesn't state that it's a replacement for the TOPS FRC grant request. So those of us who carefully review the City Council agendas and resolutions had no way of knowing, and so there was no one here to speak on behalf or defend the original proposal. So I'm all for the tri-Amtrak proposal, but not as a replacement for the TOPS FRC proposal. I watched the video, and it took about three minutes for years of planning to be jettisoned, and I think we can do better than that, so that's why I'm here today. I'm not on the Board of TOPS or FRC, but from a citizen's perspective, I can see, we need the city's expertise, creativity, and access to grants and agencies, and a, a lot of the creative thinking that we saw in the work session tonight, we need that, but we need to be a good partner. And we need, and the private sectors and the faith centers can't alone solve the problem of food insecurity and homelessness in our city. So my understanding and what we've heard is that TOPS and FRC board are ready to utilize the original grant request. I ask that it be restored, and I believe that going forward, we should do what we can to make things more clear, and to make it more transparent to the community when changes are being made, so that people can be here and be involved in the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much Kathy.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Carpenter, I'm a Butler County Commissioner and Hanover Township resident, and I have to agree, and I didn't, don't remember your first name, sorry, I already lost your place in the audience, but I, I do have to agree that we need to be maybe a little more transparent in the Commissioner's office, too, because although I met with all of the cities, and met with Jessica and Doug, and talked about a lot of the opportunities to present proposals to the Commissioners for the ARPA money, I did say that I support reviewing that TOPS and FRC proposal to build a new building, because I knew that we were funding two of the other community centers, let me, let me correct that, I know that I'm supporting the funding of two of the other community centers, so I hope that Oxford would send in some type of similar proposal, so that we could hope that Oxford would send in some type of similar proposal so that we could have equity around the county. As it turned out, when the amended proposal, which was actually a replacement proposal, came through, it came through to the Commissioners as an amended proposal for the Social Services Center. Now it's three million dollars. So I thought, good for them. I hope that we give them three million dollars now that they've, you know... But I didn't, I didn't review it to see that was a different proposal. And now there's confusion with, with the individual Commissioners on what they actually voted for because I had the mic when we reviewed our final selections for the ARPA projects, and I read them off, and I described the Tops project as the Family Resource Food Pantry Project, you know, combining into one building for centralized services, and that's what the three Commissioners said, yes, we support. And that's what our clerk interpreted that to be, and that's what ended up on the resolution. However, one Commissioner thinks that both of your proposals are the same proposal, that you, that the tri-center is the Family Resource Center. So one Commissioner doesn't know that they're different, and I don't know what the other Commissioner thinks. But in our, looking back on, on how the communication happened to us, really, that's what happened with the, the single summary line that we got. Also, when we described awarding one point five million dollars, I really thought it was going to Tops, but City, the City of Oxford sent us a letter back that said, we were not getting three million, so we can only fund the senior center. Well, that didn't go higher up in our notes either, so I'm not convinced that my fellow Commissioners know that have agreed that this is going to just fund a senior center. And when I think about the replacement of one proposal from the other, I'm also not sure that our county prosecutor will say that that's okay to just, at the end of our whole process of hearing everybody's proposals for funds across the county, that we have a request for a large amount of money and we don't have a public hearing on it, you know? So, you know, that's another issue that we have to solve at our level, you know? We've kind of finished having our public hearings on the ARPA dollars, although there are some funds available. I think five million dollars is still left, so that's where I'm at. That's very confusing on your side and on our side, and it's unfortunately so. We do not have any restrictions on not raising other revenue. Sunny Hill Community Center will need millions and millions from the City of Middletown School District and so on. And what was some of the other things? I know you can't.
Got about forty-five seconds.
Okay. Yeah, so I think that explains that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We're very happy to have you here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Nicola Rodriguez, and I handle the client services at the Family Resource Center, and I'm also overseeing things in the absence of an executive director currently at FRC. I just wanted to clarify a few things. Our former director resigned his position in August of 2022, although this proposal was presented to the county way back in 2021. He continues to still work on a part-time basis at FRC and is definitely in communication with us. We also have a Board of Directors that we, that I work with on a regular basis to help oversee things at FRC. I also wanted to clarify that while we are no longer running the cold shelter, the organized cold shelter that we did for the last two years, and we were not able to do that because of the lack of funding, the COVID funds ran out and the city funding ran out. We also had a staff member who was our shelter liaison that moved on to a different job, and as a result, we were not able to have the organized cold shelter. But we continue to house people at the neighboring Budget Inn, emergency cases, cases where there's extreme cold weather conditions, and we definitely do case management on an ongoing basis, not only with clients who are homeless, but also clients that come to us for any utility assistance and other things. And it would be wonderful to have a new building to be able to continue our services, continue cold shelter operations in the future. I also wanted to add that FRC partners with many social service organizations in Oxford and in the county, and we work with the senior center, we work closely with Tops, and it's, it is hard to see that we have to make a decision on who gets the funding. It would be wonderful if both proposals could go forward and both organizations could be funded. Finally, I just, I wanted to ask a question of the city about concerns that they had. We would like to know what those concerns are so that we can address them accordingly in lieu of building the new building. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming, Nicola. We appreciate it. Hi.
Hello. I am Sheri Martin, and I am the Executive Director for Tops. I, I listened to your conversation earlier, and I, I do not envy any of you. That's a, it's a huge weight and a huge decision you have to make. And I, I just wanted to mention that I'm here as a resource. If you have any questions, I will be emailing some of my point of view later this evening when I collect my thoughts, but I wanted you to be able to put a face with the name. And I also wanted to point out, just after listening, that I think that a lot of concern is about the time constraints, and I just want to point out that our shovel-ready project is, is a Morton building, which is like a pole barn-type building, which we got confirmation could go up in a matter of days. The excavating would take longer than building the actual building, so I just wanted to point that out, and thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. It's much appreciated. Would anyone else like to address council?
Okay, we'd like to thank you all for coming. We appreciate it, and if you have additional comments and want to send them, you can definitely send them to Heather, and she'll make sure that everybody on council gets them. You also have the opportunity, obviously, to send them to each of us individually as well. We will move then to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Send it.
It's been moved and seconded. Are any items to be removed?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to remove the minutes from the consent agenda.
That's item A.
Item A, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any others? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, which is ultimately the, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. In regards to the minutes, I would just point out that two of us were not there, and so we would like to abstain from the approval of the minutes since we were not there. But also, I notified Heather of an error, typographical error that was made, so the votes were listed as four oh when they were five oh, and she's going to make those changes. Are there any other comments or questions on the minutes?
Mayor, procedurally, the motion can be to adopt the minutes so that those individuals who weren't present could vote. However, you've got a quorum necessary to vote, so it's not required, but I want to point that out procedurally because the minutes reflect the action of the body. One doesn't have to be there to adopt them to reflect what the body did in the event that there's some time, there may not be a quorum there.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the January third meeting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. Then we'll move to resolutions, and Heather, you can read our first resolution, our only resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works Local Assistance Grant in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand two hundred six dollars.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Send it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Alex. Casey, welcome.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I bring your resolution that I hope is of non-contention.
I think it's a happy resolution.
A happy resolution, yeah. So as you've heard me talk before, we were awarded a grant from Nature Works, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, for a little over forty-six thousand dollars. This is for enhancement and improvement of the playground at the community park. This will add some features and amenities that are ADA-inclusive as well as wheelchair accessible. We do not have amenities like this at any city-owned playground. While they're all technically considered ADA-compliant, they're not necessarily wheelchair-friendly. So this will bring that, at least that one playground, up to that standard, which is discussed directly in the ADA Transition Plan the city adopted in 2021. So some of the features this will add is an ADA whirl, which is sort of like a, like a merry-go-round, so to speak, but it's at surface level that a wheelchair can roll directly onto. And both wheelchair users and able-bodied children together can utilize this piece of equipment. It'll also add all-new surfacing, which is all ADA-compliant, so wheelchairs are easily able to roll across this surface on anywhere that is on that playground. And then lastly, we're going to add some activity panels and music pieces that are wheelchair-friendly, so anybody can use them regardless of their abilities and, and so... And I think that's it. So the forty-six thousand dollars will be combined with the CIP funds for the city, which is seventy-five thousand dollars. Technically, I think it says a hundred and twenty-five, but we're asked to raise fifty of that, so this forty-six takes care of almost all of that. I do have a grant request out for additional funds to go towards this project that I should hear about by the end of this month, so that would allow us to increase what we can accomplish just a little bit more. We have written an RFP that will be published on, starting January twenty-seventh, for a couple of weeks, and then we'll ask for our proposals back in February, and then we'll review those and make a decision on how we want to proceed.
Thank you, Casey. Very exciting project.
Very exciting.
Would anyone from the public like to address this resolution before council? Not seeing any councilors. Do you have any questions or comments?
As I would say, equity comes in all kinds of different forms, and this is awesome. You know, the idea of a playground that is truly accessible? I can't wait to see it and ride it.
I'm going to ride it.
You can.
Okay.
My wife and I were seeing, were looking at a, it was a national article that was about a community that did exactly this kind of thing. It got great play, and I said, well, that's cool, but we're getting one of those. And I, that's, it's just really exciting that we're able to do that, so.
So thank you for the grant submission.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, that resolution is adopted. We'll move to the ordinances, and we'll start with first reading, number one.
An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oxford codified ordinances.
Okay, and we will turn to the city manager to fill us in.
All right. So the city utilizes the services of Walter H. Drain Company to codify our city ordinances. This includes ordinances unique to the City of Oxford, such as planning and zoning, as well as the city's traffic and general offenses codes. These mirror state law for the most part. The codification process includes making revisions, rearranging, and consolidating into various titles, chapters, and sections. And once adopted by the city council, these revisions are published both electronically and in limited hard copies. On the agenda then is this ordinance to add, amend, or repeal certain sections or chapters. I might add, though, it's not repealing any. This time it's just adding or amending sections. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Super. Would anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? This is first reading, so you notice we didn't have a motion yet. That'll happen on second reading. Counselors, any questions? This is kind of a regular thing that we do, so keeping up with state law. We'll move then to second readings. Heather?
An ordinance levying upon the lots and lands enumerated in the list of estimated assessments, the amounts set forth on such list, and setting forth terms for payment of assessments.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Send it.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alex. And Mike?
Thank you, Your Honor. Nothing additional from first reading.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Any councilors have questions or comments? Okay, you may call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Navy?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When you're ready, you can read the second.
An ordinance repealing the November two thousand and eight Oxford Comprehensive Plan and all the amendments thereto, and adopting a new comprehensive plan entitled Oxford Tomorrow.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
Send it.
Second.
Thank you for the second, Councilor Prather.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sam. Any changes?
Here's our plan. We've been working on it for a year and a half.
Long time.
So you all have it. It's in digital form as well. We do have some minor, non-sensitive changes, one of which came from Housing Advisory Commission today, and we had a couple other ones. City Manager brought one up, and a few other little changes, but nothing of substance, so that's all I have to report. Thank you to the community for all the help in the process.
Thank you to the staff for shepherding us through this whole process, and I think it's a really good example of working with the public in every, it was so transparent, and everybody had an opportunity to participate in it, so thank you for doing that work. Would anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Ian?
Ian, here, I live in Southern Knowles on Dana Drive. I am here in my professional role as a consulting facilitator for Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice. I have made a few notes. I'm going to stumble more than I would when I typically have things written out. Thank you for having that public session on the ARPA funds and the EMS funding. I agree that transparency is important, and opportunities for the public to see your debates at work are important, and I really want to thank the members of the public who were here tonight to comment and to witness. I participate in all of the public input sessions that were held to give comments about the Comprehensive Plan, and I agree that it is elegant and detailed, and having over eight hundred members of the community and thirty steering committee members participate in putting it together really does signal the importance of public involvement, and the good work that you all are doing, staff and city council, to listen to the public. That said, the role of the public is not done because I could use more information about how that Comprehensive Plan is going to get turned into goals and resolutions and ordinances and priorities and funding decisions. We saw in the work session tonight that there was considerable complexity involved in decision-making around allocation of one point five million dollars in county ARPA funds. I was involved in that process from the very beginning, as Assistant City Manager Green said, and was happy to participate in that collaborative presentation with Jessica and Brad, and was excited that there would be an opportunity for funds to support a plan that we had been working on for a number of years at Tops. There were missteps or mistakes or, or serious issues that occurred in the process of decision-making, and I... And, um, I decided that rather than, um, elaborate on all of those in public, um, I would, um, communicate with counselors, um, through email, uh, in a more detailed way. Uh, I've already spoken with several of you about, um, issues I have with the process being personally implicated in some of those. And so, uh, I want to put those in writing and give those some more thought, um, and add some of the material from the work session. But that said, um, I know that, uh, we are all people of goodwill, uh, who work hard, who are talented, um, who bring our best professional selves to our work. And, um, Oxford has been a great place for me to live for forty-one years, and I wish the same were true for the five hundred and ninety-seven unique families, um, who were served in twenty-twenty-two by TOPPS. Sherry Martin took over as Executive Director from me, and she's cer- deserves tremendous, um, accolade for really growing the census, um, of, um, TOPPS. Unfortunately, that many families need, um, extra food. And I want to thank Kathy Brinkman, um, uh, who, uh, came and spoke. I called on OCPJ, my employer, to, uh, take this up, um, as an ongoing issue, the relation between, um, the workings or, or missteps in democracy and maintaining a social, uh, class caste system in Oxford. You were talking about the complexity of funding, um, in relationships with the university, and, um, I'll be, uh, sharing some more of those thoughts in my written communication with you, uh, members of the council. But thank you for the work session tonight and for your, uh, considered decision-making.
Thank you, Anne. We appreciate you very much. Anyone else like to address this ordinance? Uh, counselors?
Congratulations, Sam, and to your team.
And I have expressed a lot of thanks to all the eight hundred or so people, the staffers, the, uh, steering committee members, the stakeholder groups that we're met with, the consultants, my fellow counselors, prior counselors who helped, uh, fund this, Doug for carving it out of the budget, um, all the people who participated online. But again, my thanks, we, we repay the thanks by, by working as hard as we can to implement what the people told us are their priorities. Um, and I think that, as I said last time, we're trying to be more and more transparent about that, about how we can take what the people said is a priority, uh, and turn that into policy changes. They can turn that into budgetary decisions, uh, and so that the input can be along the way. We're gonna have a, uh, work session on Friday, and hopefully at the end of the meeting, you can talk about how that's gonna go. But I think, yeah, that I think our work of publicly engaging people is ongoing, um, and we need to keep building in those opportunities for people to help have a say on the budget and that kind of stuff. What I would say, though, is that this is a long-range plan, but, but, but the work of governance is also trying to roll with opportunities. And so we have plans, and then you also have to just act strategically. And so I think it's gonna be a little bit of walking with our minds up here, but also with our eyes towards, and that, it might get messy sometimes there, too. So we hope people bear with us, and we hope to repay your engagement with change, good, good change. It's a beautiful vision in the plan, and I hope Oxford can be like the vision.
I hope that in the future, all counselors and all members of Planning Commission will get a hard copy. Yep, so they should, that should be their handbook. Without any additional commentary, I would ask for a call of the roll.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Navy?
Yes. This ordinance and Oxford Tomorrow Plan is adopted. Congratulations. Uh, we will move now to announcements and communications, and I'll begin with City Manager Elliot.
Thank you. As I mentioned in our last meeting, as of the first of the year, the city of Oxford now owns, manages, and operates the Oxford Cemetery. We got our certificate from the, uh, Department of Commerce, Division of, uh, uh, Real Estate and Professional Licensing, so we're official now. I also want to share with you that, as you can see, Jeff Robinson is sitting here where normally JJ would be sitting, and I think council realizes that JJ is attending the FBI National Academy. He'll be back with us, uh, just about on Green Beer Day, I think.
Good timing there, yeah.
So I've appointed, uh, Jeff Robinson at, uh, the chief's recommendation to be the acting police chief during JJ's absence, so wanted to share that with you tonight. Also, uh, staff and I met with the Commissioner for the Butler County General Health District to discuss this draft tobacco retail license ordinance. And under the draft ordinance, the Health District would administer the program to include licensing, collection of fees, and compliance checks. Uh, the proposed license fee would be four hundred and fifty dollars a year. I think I've shared with you that the city currently has twenty-one retail establishments, which have a state license issued by the county auditor at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. And this license enables them to sell tobacco products. Uh, so this proposed, uh, draft ordinance would, uh, include licensing of tobacco products and electronic smoking devices. So staff and I will work with, uh, uh, the Butler County General Health District, uh, to bring forward probably an ordinance, uh, sometime in February or March on that. Uh, the other thing that I want to share with you, as I mentioned in the workshop on the, uh, staffing for fire EMS and the funding, uh, we're working on a lateral promotion memorandum of understanding. We now, of course, have a contract with our firefighter paramedics, and so we want to, um, have a, uh, opportunity for lateral promotions. And, uh, I believe, uh, the union will be approving that, and it's, of course, a priority, uh, since, as I mentioned earlier, that, uh, we are losing, we've already lost one by the end of the month. We'll have lost the second of our full-time firefighter paramedics. And that's all I have this evening, unless you have any questions for me.
Can I just ask one? Are we also looking at this zoning angle on regulating, um, tobacco? Because there's, in terms of, are we looking at ways to regulate the location as well as the daily operation?
We're discussing that, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and the density as well, so we, we, there's more information that we need to work out before we present anything to city council.
Okay, Mike?
Nothing, ma'am, thanks.
Welcome, Lieutenant Robinson.
Acting Chief. Thank you. A couple of things, just in, uh, the spirit of chief not being here, but, uh, we are hosting our, I'm not sure how many annual, but, uh, annual Citizens Police Academy. Coming up February sixth, uh, encourage anybody that's not been to sign up. Anybody that has been, sign up, because while the chief's away, the kids are gonna play, and we've come up with some good ideas for this spring, so some new things at the, uh, at the police academy, um, as well. Sign up for NICSOL while you're on our webpage. We do still have a few months of winter weather coming up. Miami University starts classes on Monday. Talawanda is back in session since our last meeting, uh, with council, so we do have, uh, anticipated delays, closures, things like that. Uh, but you will hear about the, uh, the parking and road conditions from our NICSOL account, so please sign up for that, uh, if you have not already. Uh, and lastly, just to kind of touch base on the, the students coming back from Miami, uh, a little shameless plug for, uh, some of the things that I, I oversee in my day-to-day job as our, our police officers. And, you know, we've had an exceptionally cold winter, uh, and during this winter, they have, uh, conducted vacant house checks around town. We talked about signing up for those in a number of our meetings in the fall and going into break, but I don't think you hear about what happens afterwards. Uh, so we've found a way to track those, and we're about at eight hundred and fifty individual vacant house checks that we've completed, uh, just in the past few weeks, about three and a half, four weeks. Uh, and we've spent approximately eighty hours of, uh, extra foot patrol out and about during the cold weather, walking the alleyways, uh, walking the streets, and just being out and about in the community, uh, trying to add a little bit of guardianship to, uh, to the areas that, uh, that don't really have any during this time. So kudos to our officers who've been out in the cold weather, uh, beating feet and putting, uh, leather to pavement, doing the, uh, doing the house checks, so kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joe?
Nothing, ma'am, thank you.
Chief? Okay, so Casey? I was looking for you.
I, I'm in a new spot tonight. I want to take a moment and thank everyone who was part of Chocolate Meltdown. Enjoy Oxford, and the Art Center, and the Art Museum, um, Jessica and her team uptown with Seth. Uh, it was, it was actually a lot of fun, and the weather was about as good as we could ask for, uh, in the middle of January. Had a great turnout. We had little kids riding bulls, and we had adults riding tricycles, and it was sort of all flip-flops, but it was a lot of fun. I think at one point even, uh, Seth may have been covered in cotton candy across his face and everywhere else. So, um, it was just, it was a lot of partnership, and I think it's really just a matter of, um, or speaks volumes to how this community tends to operate. We just come together and do things as organizations, as one big event, rather than piecing them together ourselves, and it really has a lot bigger impact, so, um, thanks for everyone that was there and, and made it possible, and, um... One more quick plug for those interested, the, uh, Bows and Bow Ties Dance is coming up that we do every year. We, uh, formally call it Daddy Daughter Dances. Those sell out every year. There's a max of two hundred. The event's at the high school on February, or I'm sorry, at the middle school on February tenth, so, uh, get your tickets now, because we typically sell all two hundred of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Sam? Jessica?
I want to second to thank you for the Chocolate Meltdown. It was a great collaboration across numerous organizations, so it's always fun to see when events grow because of collaboration. And then, second, I wanted to just touch briefly on the retreat. So we do have our council retreat this coming Friday, um, from noon until four at the Haveringhurst Room in the Lane Public Library, and we will have lunch together, um, and just kind of enjoy a little bit of social time. And then I imagine that we will review our progress toward our twenty-twenty-two goals that you guys adopted way back, uh, last year. And then we will propose to you our twenty-twenty-three goals based on your input from last year. So we're always looking a year ahead. And so we'll propose our twenty-twenty-three goals to you that were built into the budget and, um, talk about that. And there's always an opportunity for what I call the pivot and squeeze, right? Where you're like, "Actually, I'd rather you do this than that," or "Please add this in," um, and so we have an opportunity to do that. And then finally, we'll start to think about twenty-four. And it sounds like it's a really long way off, but what we take is your, all of your ideas, and then we narrow those down, and then we get to work on research, and we say like, "Okay, how could we do this?" And we bring that back forward to you in time for the budget season, which is in June. So it's really only about a six-month research period, which is why we're kind of always leapfrogging to the, the next year. So that is our plan for the afternoon, and I hope we have fun. There'll be post-it notes and stickers and big boards, and, you know, I get all geeky about that kind of stuff, so we, we should have some fun.
Thank you, Jessica. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Well, I regret to inform you that I will not be at the retreat on Friday, since I have a couple planned days off, but Ben Mazer will be there in my stead.
Okay. Glenn?
As was stated earlier, uh, Miami will be starting its spring semester beginning Monday, so this weekend may be a little hectic, and I would like to just, uh, all the citizens of Oxford right now just try to be patient with those people, 'cause they get a little out of hand. Thank you.
I have a couple things. So first of all, congratulations to everybody involved with Chocolate Meltdown. It was a ton of fun. Uh, I was super lucky to be asked to be a judge for the baking competition, so, uh, it was as great as expected. So just, I appreciate the collaboration with OCAC and, uh, the city, and just congratulations to everybody. Uh, item number two is just that, uh, yes, this decision on the ARPA funding is gonna be really difficult, but I will say that it's weirdly a blessing to have it be such a difficult decision, to look out at this room full of people that care so profoundly about those who are most vulnerable in our community is really inspiring and part of why I want to be up here helping to make those decisions. So thank you to everybody, uh, whether you spoke or not, whether you're still here or not, um, for representing those voices in our community that need that the most. And then lastly, I want to thank you to a group of Miami University students who reached out to me to let me know that the first week of February, that's February first through seventh, is National Gun Violence Survivors Week, um, and sent me some data that indicates that every year, on average, one thousand six hundred and two Ohioans are killed in acts of gun violence, and nearly three thousand seven hundred and fifty-three more are shot and wounded. Um, so I ask that we all keep that in mind during that first week of February. If you're able to do some research and help out where you can. I know, uh, Councilor Franklin and I have had conversations, around living room conversations, that we look forward to getting back up and running during the semester. One of those topics will be gun safety and safe storage, so we look, look forward to discussing that, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Meltdown?
When I was listening to the comments earlier, I couldn't help but notice some of the tensions between the different, um, representatives and organizations, and I wasn't privy to any of those earlier conversations. So I had thought originally, "Man, that would be cool if we had, if we could kind of pull together resources, not trying to blow anything up and start from scratch." But, um, it made me really think that how much we're fighting over so few dollars, right? For such a huge safety net that every single one of these organizations are trying to serve, right? The population they're trying to serve, you're serving truly the most marginalized of our community. And when I think about what the intention is of everyone in this room is to make a community that is thriving, right? We are not seeing needles whenever we're walking to school. We are not having people breaking into our house, right? That are struggling just to meet whatever needs they feel they need to meet. And every single one of these organizations do that. And it makes me so sad to see any type of fighting, but that's what happens, right? You're a marginalized community that you fight over these resources that people tell you that you don't, there are not enough for you. Um, and so I'm excited to look forward on how can we be creative? On how do we currently spend our money? And how can we maybe try to tighten up our budget a little bit so that we can maybe have a little bit more than, what is the percentage? Point five percent? I think that goes towards social services. So I think that it is an opportunity for us to not have the marginalized amongst us fight for these resources that we know that there are more of. So I'm really looking forward to that happen in the future, and thank you so much for representing the people who cannot be in the room.
Thank you. Amber?
Happy New Year. Uh, this is my first meeting in January, and I bring you greetings from the sunny island of Anguilla, where I got to spend ten days with my family. Hadn't been there since before the pandemic. They were complaining about how chilly it was because of the cold snap that we had here, because it went down to seventy-one at night.
Oh, my goodness.
They had no sympathy for me, as I think about with, uh, Acting Chief Robinson and the officers doing those house checks. But, uh, I said this last year, I'll say it again, on that island, we say Happy New Year until the end of January and sometimes into a little bit of February, so I, I wish you a Happy New Year. I'd like to thank OPD for their work doing those vacant house checks. I know it's a lot of work, and it, it also reminds me of the cost of not having year-round residents living uptown amongst the students, because when there's a presence of people who are there year-round, I think it, um, makes it less inviting for people who might break in, um, out of want or need, so, um, thank you for that. And I also want to just make a, a comment about, um, how much I value, uh, the vulnerability that I saw here tonight, especially from, um, from Assistant City Manager Green and, uh, Commissioner Carpenter. Mistakes happen, missteps happen. There are a lot of moving parts, and I think it shows a lot of courage and vulnerability to be able to say, you know, "This is where I stepped ahead of things," or "Didn't check back with this group," or when, uh, Commissioner Carpenter talked about, you know, "I didn't look at it carefully. I assumed..." Sometimes these things happen, and, and, you know, we, we do have to clean this up and, and, and make the best choice and the best decision here, but I do want to say thank you for, for the honesty, vulnerability, um, and, uh, for the hard work that everyone's doing. I know everyone is doing their best. We are all people of goodwill in this room, so thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
I just wanted to ask that in upcoming decisions, we, we put the most vulnerable first. We have lots of options to help a lot of the community, and all of them are deserving, but I think we should prioritize by those who are, are struggling the most to meet basic needs.
Thank you.
So two little things. One is a little thing is that, um, in our retreat, uh, you know, my homework is gonna be to look at the comp plan. I know that, I know that some things we're thinking about budget items, but I still do believe that some things we're trying to do are policy that maybe don't make, we don't need to wait for twenty-twenty-four to work on. So if there are things that are policies that we can adopt, codes, I think we should be thinking about what can we do in twenty-three, as well as budgeting for twenty-four. And, um, I was thinking also about how our conversation today, and sometimes it can feel like a zero-sum game, but it's not, you know? And I think our comprehensive plan, it's got a hundred and sixty-five items in here, all of which we believe in profoundly. We're going to have to prioritize, moving forward, at a certain time, which thing we do when. But, you know, I have found Oxford, in the time I've been involved with it, our ambitions grow, and with our ambitions- and with our ambitions, we manage to get more and more accomplished. Like, we're thinking bigger and we're getting more done. And so I think that, when I think about making these trade-offs, and Councilor Raghu is absolutely right, I mean, we just approved funding for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a piece of equipment, you know? Or water softening that costs seventeen million dollars, like, there's gotta be a way for us to do both of these things. Maybe they're stagger temporally, or, but yeah, I think it's about priorities and not a zero-sum game. And so I think we need to be thinking about moving forward on both fronts, and again, thank you to everyone. I can see when it seems like, what an unpleasant place to be if values of equity pitted against each other. It's not really what this is about, you know? So, and again, there's a long-term perspective, and then there's like, all this ARPA money was something we never even had to deal with before. I mean, it's a wonderful problem to have, right? You know, how do you allocate? But it, you know, we're doing a lot more than we've ever done before, and it's hard to keep on top of all. So thank you also to staff and to the public, and the empathy all around for difficult decisions, and so thank you.
Okay, I would like, thank you, I would like to thank all the members of the public who came and those who wrote in advance and talked to different members of council. I think it always helps us to hear from the public, and we appreciate it. I think you heard up here that what we have in common and what we do agree on is, as David said, we support both of these goals, and we want to accomplish them both. And so my goal will be to figure out how can we find a way to make both happen. And we're gonna have to make a priority choice, but that doesn't mean that we give up on the, whatever comes up number second. Anyway, thank you very much for coming. I want to congratulate Lieutenant Robinson and let you know that council's behind you a hundred percent as you fulfill this acting chief duty, and I know you'll do a good job. You've always demonstrated that you will do a good job. Finally, I want to remind people in the public that COVID is still with us. I've just finally tested positive, negative, after testing positive. I tested positive for nearly two weeks. Because I was vaccinated, it was not a significant problem for me, but it was still not anything that I would want for any of you to have to put up with. It's just like, it was a miserable cold rather than a life-threatening. But it was still COVID, and it was still not pleasant. There's also the RSV, there's also the flu. So I encourage those who can and would to get vaccinated where you can and to be careful and judicious in every other place that you can. So with all that, I would recommend and recognize a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, thank you.